Please hand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the right of which it stands. One nation, united in the heavens.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Idman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arborster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. The approval of the agenda?
No approval.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. Takes us down to the city administrator's report.
Didn't give you an update today because we've been messing with trying to get remote computer operating and that, of course, turned into a nightmare. But it's working now. Life is good. So you got my report. The RFQs for the IT stuff is due tomorrow at 5:00. We'll start reviewing that and then I'll get with my IT experts and have them help me to decide what companies we should be talking to. The Washington Street wall, the mayor went by and looked at it today. I got caught up on the computer stuff so I didn't get a chance to go by and look. But the wall is done itself, just the wall. So there's no backfilling. The street is not being worked on yet. That's coming. But the wall part is in. So the footing in that has all been done. The fence is about four weeks out, so we'll put up some orange fencing to protect it just to, because we don't have any other options at this point. Like all construction materials, things are running behind. So it'll be coming soon. And then we've got, offices will be closed for the holidays and our new, we're sending out a press release. I'll send it out tonight. So our new online billing service is up and running. You can access your account, but you need to have your bill with you so you can sign in because you need to have the exact address that's on the bill that shows and your account number. So you can get in anytime and take a look at your bill if you didn't get one. You can then look for it. If you want to get an email bill, you have to call in. You cannot sign up for it yourself. It's so we can regulate that. That's the way G-Works has set it up. They want us to be the ones that talk to people to verify that you want to get it emailed and the email address. So you have to call in for that. And there's also a payment system that was incorporated with this system that works seamlessly. And that's Forte. That's also been signed into. We all signed those contracts. So it's up and running. So I think we've got something else to help people. If they don't want to come by and pay the bill, they don't want to drop it in the dropbox. We've got so many options. This is just something else I think's good, especially at this time. So, question?
Abby, is there any kind of a convenience fee or any kind of a fee associated with paying that bill through this Forte?
Yeah, anything that is charged has a convenience fee to it. I think it's, I can't remember the numbers. If they do an e-check, it's like $1.75. If they do a credit card, it's like 2%. And we've always had court money on there to do the collecting for us before if they wanted to pay a water bill. This is a little less expensive. Not that much, but it's, there is a fee because we're not gonna, we're not responsible for paying those fees.
Is there any change to the automatic draft? No.
No, that's, that was already in the system. That's something that already.
Okay, so no one, anybody who has it automatically drafted, they don't have to worry about change and think that they don't want to?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
You've got somebody else waiting to get in, though.
No, thank you.
Samuel.
David Bova, your report?
Good evening.
Hey, Mr. Green.
My staff report there. Just wanted to go over a couple of things. See, we hired, I talked about it last time we were interviewing, we hired a building inspector, Mr. Gene Kurtz, who started on October 14th and has been on the job now for three weeks and doing a good job.
Good.
We did have a planning and zoning meeting this past week, so there'll be a couple of special instruments come before you on December 10th. And you'll get that information with your packet that week. That's the only really things that I have on the building permits there. There is one residence that's on that permit at Hope Subdivision, so hopefully we'll see another house going up here soon. Any questions?
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Gary?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys got my reports. We removed the remainder of the display cases out from the Welcome Center. Burned the brush site, patched the potholes, cut the brush and wease to move the debris from the ditch in Point Base on the west side. Put rock around the grate to make it easier to access to keep it clean. Cut some brush and trees at Valley Spring Park. Repairs on the dump truck. Cleaned and worked on organizing the shop downtown cleanup for events. Swept leaves and put out barricades for events.
Nice flush on the ditch in Point Base.
Thanks.
I've got a question about the leaves. I was coming across, I guess it was Jefferson, and the people, they rake their leaves out into the street about four foot wide, about a foot deep, all the way along the street. Is that, now is that our responsibility? Or is that still a homeowner's?
Not supposed to be.
Okay. Because it's gonna be a major clog up on all the grates.
Yeah.
Joe?
In line with that, the ordinance, that falls under the grass clipping ordinance too, doesn't it? In years past, the city attorney or the prosecutor we had at the time said that our code was too broad and that it wasn't specific enough to actually enforce because the way it's written now, they would have to physically see who's doing it and not just saying, well, that's my leaves out there or my grass clippings, even though my yard is freshly cut, it's in front of my house. The way the ordinance reads, they have to see who did it. And we've talked several times before about visiting that ordinance and putting it on the, whoever owns the property, regardless of who's living there, it's the property owner's responsibility. And I don't think we've ever really addressed it. We've talked about it, but we've never done it. And I think our, you know, the leaves would be the same issue as the grass. You don't, you can't prove who did it. But it should be the homeowner's responsibility to not put their clippings or their leaves out in the street and harm our storm sewers. Mark, have you reviewed that ordinance at all?
I have not, but I think, you know, you're gonna have enforcement problems unless you establish who did what and when. That could easily be solved by somebody knocking on the door and saying, hey, just put these leaves out or the grass clippings out there. And that would either be a code enforcement officer or a police officer to begin a brief investigation about a code violation.
So if the ordinance specifically states that the property owner is responsible for yard waste and stuff, that's not good enough?
You still have to prove you put it there. You know, I mean, you can make a circumstantial case. You know, when it's obvious, there's a ton of leaves in everybody's yard, this one yard is completely clean and all those leaves are out in the street. You may be able to make a circumstantial case under those circumstances. I would still, I mean, I'm not the prosecutor. This is really going through municipal court, but I am a prosecutor in other municipalities. I'd still want a code enforcement officer to go knock on the homeowner's property because it could have been like, especially if they're older and their grown kids came over and did it. You know, you're not gonna want to cite the homeowner if somebody did it. You know, you want to get the right person for the code violation. And really, and those kind of things, you probably want to issue warnings first and just talk to people first. I mean, that's generally how I want code enforcement issues to handle. But, but yeah, I guess the short answer is yes, you can cite somebody for putting debris in a roadway. It's always best to go ahead and contact that person and the vast majority of people are gonna talk to you about it and say, yeah, I just want to clean up my yard. And I think if that fails, then maybe we can revisit the ordinance. But I think you should go through a normal procedure to ask it. I mean, because most people, I mean, even when you follow up people for speeding, you say, you know, you don't want to have pulled your order without a speed. Most people just admit what they did. So I think the main thing is just making sure that people understand that we don't have some machine that comes by and sweeps up the grass or the leaves. And does that work for them? Is their responsibility?
Well, I would like to ask if you can visit that ordinance along with Jeremy and come up with what, between what he wants the wording to say and what you as your city attorney thinks it should say, so that we can button that up a little bit because we've been dealing with it as long as I've been on the board.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk to him about it and take away. I literally have not looked at that ordinance. I mean, I haven't been a long time. It's everything else.
And maybe visit, you know, some of your other municipalities, how they deal with it.
Absolutely. I mean, I'll tell you, the other cities are on that. You know, that's how I advise you do it and that's how, they generally work. You know, people usually don't defiantly, you know, put the leaves out there. It's usually somebody that thinks, well, I'm just gonna brush it out here. People don't realize, like even with grass clippings, how dangerous it is for motorcyclists. A lot of it is just telling people, you know, hey, this is a problem. This doesn't go away if you put it in the roadway. But yeah, I'll definitely take a look at it or, you know, review it and check that.
Hey, Paul.
Hey, Bob.
I've seen the same thing you did over on Jefferson.
That's the street right by the cemetery? Is it right across from the cemetery? That's, I was just through there today, looking at that wall and I come around that alley and, I mean, it's five feet wide all the way down that side of the street, so.
Yeah, I must have traveled the same path that you did and stuff.
Yeah, it was Jefferson.
You know, can we maybe get a public service announcement in the paper, maybe something on Facebook also, reminding citizens, you know, that it is illegal or, you know, wrong to blow waste out in the street because it seems like there's a extremely large amount of leaves this year for some reason. But I know I've had them in my yard and stuff and had to go up three times and stuff. It just seems like it's, it's worse over there. There might be other parts of town also, but it's a big deal.
Well, it's bad there. It's right on that hill and it's all of that, when a good rain is going right down in, right towards, right on down the line, you know, so. Yeah, I think a public announcement at some time too because we have, we have opportunity at the brush site, all leaves in there too, right? So, and then we also have the opportunity, we can burn some leaves too at certain times of the year. So there's options for people, so. Anything else?
Speaking of that, is it open burning yet?
It's on your agenda.
It's on the agenda.
I missed that part.
What kind of repairs did you do on the dump truck?
We had to replace the starter on one and did some routine maintenance on another one.
No ready for where?
Yeah.
We have any salt?
Yep.
We won't need it because of global warming. Yeah, that's right.
Fine with that. That it? Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Bobby?
All right, you guys have my written report. To recap some of the events that took place recently, the establishment ceremony took place on Monday, November 2nd. It was a good event for St. Genevieve. Senator Blunt came to town and a lot of the people who put in the time to get the park established were recognized during that event, which was, took place down on Main and Market. And the city workers did a nice job closing that street off. That event all came together on pretty short notice of whether it was gonna happen at all or what kind of shape it was gonna take and it came together pretty well. On Halloween Day, we had the spooktacular event that Downtown St. Genevieve sponsors. And they had, we had more than 400 trick-or-treaters when you count kids and parents that came to the Welcome Center. That's kind of one of the registrations points for the event. And quite a few of them, I don't know if they hadn't seen the diorama before at all or were just kind of, you know, the kids would run up and take a look at it. So it was kind of neat to see. I think I talked to Chris a little bit about it afterwards and, you know, maybe next year when, or when there are events where you can tell a lot of kids are gonna come to the Welcome Center, that the National Park Service can do something to set up an educational program to take advantage of those events. The Picana Palooza this past weekend, the French Colonial America, which was kind of the lead coordinator in the event, they had a clicker counter out at the corner of Second and Market. They, they came up with about 700 people passing through the barricade. So I think it was a pretty good turnout that day. The weather was perfect and a lot of the shops and restaurants I talked to had a pretty good day that day. The Jefferson National Parks Association, which is a non-for-profit arm that helps raise money for national parks, they also handle merchandise and they came in and set up a store this week in the Welcome Center. So there's now a new rack with some, a lot of books and they have like little teddy bear dolls for sale and some junior ranger toys and books geared for kids also. They'll be moving in some more stuff in the future as they get logo items and those sort of things. So all of our merchandise that we'd done through the city, through the Welcome Center there before has transferred where they're either selling it and going to pay us for it or selling it on consignment for the city or other entities that were selling items out there. So kind of re, changes the way things are done down there in terms of merchandise. Upcoming events, we have the Cookie List Crumb Trail this weekend. So it's, instead of having the cookies handed out by various merchants, they're handing out bags that include discount coupons and promotions. And they're also gonna have a clue hunt. So they're trying to have, hoping to get 200 people to come through town and take advantage of that. And then Shop Small Saturday is coming up later in the month, November 28th. We just got our packet in the mail today that includes the gift bags and things like that. So we're gonna be working with the merchants to figure out the best ways to do that event. Holiday Christmas Festival is December 5th and 6th. Moving forward, Annette's making the plans on that. We're doing some promotions to get the word out for that event. There are gonna be precautions taken in terms of indoor concerts and venues with limited capacity. Every other seating in the churches that have concerts taking place. The musicians are requesting that those who attend wear masks. And I guess they would be in a place to be able to enforce that by saying, hey, if you don't wear a mask, I'm not gonna play a song or something like that. So that might be the best way to ensure that people take the precautions for that event. Following that, I kind of summarized the marketing campaign that I've talked to you guys about before with the state grant. And on the bottom of the second page is the chart that shows the monthly visitors to our website over the last two years plus. And you can see it's about consistently at 4,000 to 7,500 or so people that come to the website per month. And with the ad campaign that's been running, so in October, we surpassed 20,000 different users coming to the website. So certainly quite a jump there based, I think, heavily off of the Facebook traffic that was pointing people to the site. Page three, I kind of summarized the last 28 days of the Facebook marketing program. Again, showing the increase in post reach and post engagements of the number of people that are seeing things about St. Genevieve and then commenting or sharing those items certainly has increased through the marketing campaign. I know you asked last time about geographically where these people are. So on page four, this kind of summarizes the Facebook campaign since September 1st. So it includes the, when the marketing ramped up. And you can see in the middle block down there is a column of the city that people are from that were being reached by our posts. So that campaign kind of was going for maybe a one-day drive sort of trip. So you got Memphis is one of the big markets that was being hit, Springfield, Missouri, St. Louis, obviously, St. Charles and Columbia. So a lot of, St. Genevieve pops up down the list. Most of our likes and followers are St. Genevieve, Prairie County, St. Francis County. Well, this shows that this program was trying to push that out a little more to reach people, like I said, about two to three hour drive from here and try to make them more aware of St. Genevieve. And then pages five through nine, that's data from our website visitors. And that kind of breaks down by state so that you can see some of the geography there. And then also within the states of Illinois and Tennessee and Missouri, I got the breakdown on cities so you can see kind of where people that we're reaching are located. And hopefully we'll do some analysis of our data of who's coming to the Welcome Center and try to see how that correlates with the information of where we're pushing these, through the Facebook campaign at. I think looking at 2021, we'll probably continue to emphasize social media and maybe readjust our targets based on what people are comfort level is for travel and kind of what the trends are, if people are making more weekend trips or still doing day trips, that sort of thing. The back page is the number of people, visitors through the Welcome Center for the last few weeks. And as you can see, the November 7th, the Picana Palooza Day was our biggest number, not counting the trick-or-treaters through the Welcome Center. And then the monthly totals are down below there for the, for the five months since we've reopened this year. One thing I hadn't put on the report, there have been a couple of meetings that I've gone to or conversations that I've been at about the relationship with the Illinois and the historical sites on that side of the river. There is some effort over there to have their congressman push for a study for National Park Service affiliation, either as a unit of their own or potentially somehow combined with St. Genevieve. So they have some historic attractions there that are making that push through their legislatures. And I've also, there's been, at some of these meetings, discussions about the ferry, something that's, should be a priority for both sides of the river, to both seek funding that keeps the ferry going and then also funding that would provide better signage on both sides of the river to make sure people know where it is and when they get off, where they need to go next. So that's something, you know, we might want to look at just in town to make sure we're steering people the right way there and also the right way coming off the ferry as well. That's everything I have. So if anyone has any questions? All right, thanks.
If anyone's out here, I have a report. Any questions we can ask? Now we'll have our COVID discussion. Thank you for coming, Mrs. Knet.
Thank you, Ted. Would you all, well, first of all, like I said, thanks for having me. The other thing, would you all like a handout rather than be up here pontificating, rattling off numbers and stuff or what's your?
I enjoy you in person. I think it's.
Oh, well, no, I'd come with it. I'd come with it if there were any questions, but anyhow, needless to say, I have to tell you that our total, we got 823 cases with 20 probable, 71 active and two deaths. You know, that's two too many, but compared to other counties and everything, you know, at least that's something positive. And so you say, why the big up surge? I really think it's because people are just, big groups are getting together, you know. They say they don't want any more than 10 to 20 and, you know, I heard there was a wedding with 500 people. That's a lot of people, you know? So anyhow, and so, and it's really just been in the last two weeks that the numbers have Were you all aware that yesterday, the National Guard was here? They were sent by the Department of Health and Senior Services. And they've been all over the state of Missouri. In fact, they were at Moberly and they came from Moberly to us and then they were leaving and going south. And what the state is doing is they are sending them out to do free COVID testing on what they call hotspots. And we are now a hotspot and that's why they came and everything.
Mr. Knet, how many, was there a lot of people show up for that?
Uh, they did about 160.
160, okay.
So, you know, I'm sure we're gonna have some positives for that. Meanwhile, the hospital is doing them at the hospital as well as out at the facility at Bloomsdale. And when I talked to somebody at the hospital, they said at Bloomsdale, they, they had to have people call in and make appointments and everything. That's how busy they were.
Do you track the hospitalization too? Is our hospital, a lot of people from rural Missouri are going to St. Louis hospitals. So do we track that? How many people from St. Genevieve County are going to hospitals?
I'm sure that the hospital does. We don't. And to be real honest, I really wouldn't share that information because, you know, they'd say, oh, you know, you know Susie's in the hospital. I bet she's got COVID. You know, so you know how we are. And so I really, I don't know how many people are hospitalized.
I think the problem is with this all is there is so much, so much information, but it's coming from all areas and you're hearing now, you know, I heard on the news, I saw it this morning on the national news, I saw it on local news, that the problem's not with the schools or the restaurants, it's with gatherings, you know? So I would think, but I don't know. And then with people not wearing masks.
Right. And again, to me, wear a mask, social distancing, the chairs and everything. And when I walked in, your mayor questioned me about the fact that the county health board was going to have a open forum. But before I left work, the board chairman had, was rethinking that possibly it would be done Zoom because we've had a few critical comments about why would we want to gather a bunch of people, which we had got the gymnasium out at, in the original building, out at the community center and they were able, they told us they were able to distance appropriately like here and everything. And, you know, we'd require masks. So, so that's kind of, I think you'll have to wait for Facebook to see what really ends up coming from that.
Somebody has to make a decision soon. That's next Tuesday.
I realize that.
So, I'm sure you're gonna get that information out.
So, well, Robert Bach, he was the one to talk to me and he was working on that this evening.
If it is held in person, will masks be required?
Absolutely. I ordered 300 of them, so. And I have no idea what kind of, you know, how many people will come or anything like that. If you watched 60 Minutes Sunday, there was a high-ranking military person on there who is in charge of transporting the vaccine throughout the United States. And he said he doesn't sleep well at night at times. And I thought, I can kind of identify with that. I don't either sometimes. But then I'm thinking, you know, the fact that the state is setting, sending out the National Guard, that very well, that will maybe be the vehicle of how the vaccine is gonna be transported, you know, throughout the country. They still They still talk about the fact that it'll be in dry ice. They're going to put it in, pack it in suitcases. And they're also having Carney work on a special type of vial so that it doesn't break. Just think, I think there's 300 million people in the United States and you have to have two injections. Now, not all 300 people, million people are going to take the vaccine. But then the original dose, okay, then three weeks later, you have to have another one. That's going to be the kicker, I think, to get those people to make sure that they get that second dose. So I think that's about everything I I wanted to bring up tonight or this evening.
Paul, I had one comment for Mrs. Woods.
Go ahead, Bob.
Want to, you want to appreciate, you know, the work that the Health Department has done. And I realize some of these jobs are not the most popular right now. But I did get a chance to watch a couple other Health Department videos. And I hope next Tuesday, they can take some measures that they don't turn into. The one in particular at Cape Girardeau that I watched where a few people came in and were opposed to wearing masks and just made a big issue. Not all professionally done, but I hope they can take some measures to kind of prevent this Tuesday at our meeting.
Right, and there's been some discussion about.
Measures being taken to prevent that. Or if it occurs that it will be addressed in a timely manner.
So will we, if you do have it, it will be mandatory to come into that facility, you will have to wear a mask?
Yes.
Or you won't get in?
That is correct.
Okay.
I was going to say, if it is in person, and I guess it's more suggestions that the Health Department take into consideration, having an avenue for folks that are more vulnerable staying home for them to.
Well, that's why we're looking at Zoom.
So if it is held in person, maybe having a moderator with Zoom or a Facebook stream to where people that are staying home could still participate?
Yes.
Is there anything else we can do?
You know, you asked me that one other time when I came here. And I was mad at myself when I got home and thought about it that. Well, one thing, you can thank one of your aldermen who has the job of transporting all those little darlings back and forth to school. And, you know, they have to have seat charts. I I rode a bus as a young kid and, you know, you sat next to your friend and then when you got mad at her, you sat somewhere else. And I doubt seriously if things have changed that much and everything. And and also as a whole, I think our schools have done a wonderful job of, I think they probably have, I know in the public school system, there's like 2,000 kids, so. And that doesn't count like Zell and Bloomsdale, Kathleen Bloomsdale and Valley too. But I I think they've done a good job. So maybe a pat on the back of, for them and as well as for those teachers who, you know, have to teach in the class and then also teach online or virtual teaching. Other than that, you know, wear masks, self distancing, wash your hands.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any committee reports?
Well, the parks have met since I think our last meeting. The park board divided into some subcommittees fundraising and then whatnot to take, tackle our first phase of what we want to do. And so they met and gave their updates. Right now, it's mainly just figuring out the behind the scenes details. So when we do approach the public, they know what their money's going to go toward and we have to estimate on costs and stuff like that when we're ready for them. We had our pumpkin glow on the 24th and it was a pretty big success, I think. Everybody did well to social distance and had a nice even flow of participants coming in and out. Never was too proud of it. I think we had about 50 kids, we estimate. And Center for Colonial, French and Colonial Arts and the Baltic House, they donated some Smores kids. They were already packaged up, so that was a big hit. And Sue and Carl donated some pumpkins and also a big hit, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any public comments? There are no public comments. Just to the consent agenda. Call a favor?
Aye.
Takes us to old business, Bill number 4391. This is the second reading. An ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the city of Saint Genevieve, Missouri to be held April 6, 2021 and providing notice to the general public.
I'd like to just make a quick comment here. I'm sure you might have had this conversation as well. But being as we're getting ready for a general election, what are your thoughts as a board of putting the 2% increase for water sewer and the city contractor trash pickup on the ballot and let our constituents vote on it?
Not opposed to that, but we tabled that trash discussion.
Okay, how about the, how about the increase in water and sewer then?
Well, that has to be a public hearing, doesn't it? We have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, you have to have a public hearing first. I really think that's a legislative action, not a, not a voting action.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask. I thought it may be a good idea to get feedback from them while we're doing this election.
I like the spirit of it.
You know, because I'd rather listen to my constituents than make a decision I pay for later. Okay, thanks.
Got a motion?
Motion to approve.
Side. I need roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Edman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Trent?
Yes.
Alderman Albert Stern?
Yes.
A, yes, Daryl Knowles, Bill number 43, number 91 becomes ordinance number 4314.
Okay. I want to read this for the second reading, but I know there's no decent discussion on Bill number 4393, an ordinance of the city of Saint Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into extended agreement with vacant commercial design in the amount not to exceed $8,900 for the architectural and engineering services for Phase 1 of the City Hall Police Department remodeling project.
Paul, I can start the discussion there if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you in my 45 plus years of construction, I'm against this, you know, for two poles and stuff. One, I just completed a 10,400 square foot remodel, totally inside and outside. And I didn't spend on the whole entire project, architectural fees, much more than that for the whole thing. So we've already spent $13,000 and to add another $8,900 more, I think is way too much taxpayer dollars. But when I looked at his breakdown, I seen, you know, the billing fees, but I didn't see who's doing what. And most architectural firms are not heating and cooling engineers or electrical engineers or plumbing engineers, but, you know, we're not talking about remodeling a high rise building here. We're talking about, and I do 100% support the project because I've been up in the attic and seen the hazards this building faces up there with wiring and the light and stuff. But I'd rather stick another $9,000 in this project, you know, to do something else rather. I mean, we have, we have code enforcement that I think is more than capable to handle this job, dealing with a quality contractor, whoever it is. In our project, you know, each sub went to their manufacturers and those manufacturers offered free of service, services to help design, size, you know, all of the things we're talking about doing here and the rest of it. Our building department is more than capable of inspecting. We do it all the time. They did it for us in our project, which was way more complicated than this one. But I'm a 100% no.
In in support of what Bob's saying, should Bill number 4393 not be approved? What's at risk? What do we lose in this project if we don't fund that?
Well, we can't move any further on it because you don't have a signed seal set of drawings. So I don't know how we go out for bid without a full set of plans. That would be, because it's a major project, it has to have signed sealed plans.
How do we find, can we find middle ground between what your response to that question isn't what Bob's saying? Can we, can we fill that gap in house?
That is exactly what we need to do, but it's not to the tune of $8,900. You know, in the original drawings, yeah, we're changing, we're adding a bathroom. I don't know what else we're talking about adding. I haven't been part of that. But, you know, again, I'm a no on $8,900, period.
And Bob's right, the architect isn't going to do the mechanical, electrical or plumbing. It is a different group and that's the 2 to 4,000 dollars. So it may not be the full 8,900, but you're looking at 6,900 probably with.
Right.
What Steve thinks is going to be his requirement to redo the plans, to include the hallway, to move the bathrooms and then redraft everything that was incorporated with that and then help us out with the bid. We need the assistance to have somebody look at the numbers, make sure that the bid is correct, whoever is bidding is bidding correctly, that they're putting the right amounts down, that it looks like it's a, that they've looked at the numbers properly and have given us good numbers and not off the wall, if that makes sense.
Do we, do we have the expertise in house, Happy, to to fill some of this gap without executing this?
We don't have anybody that can do the drawings and sign and seal it, no. And for the bidding assistance, I mean, we can, we can look at it in house. I don't know what the public's feeling is on us inspecting our own project. Is that an issue? At this point, that is not part of this contract. We've left that out because I didn't think we would want them to do the inspection for the project. Our thought, my thought was we might ask somebody else to assist us with those inspections from a different city, from another jurisdiction, so that it doesn't look like we're going to be, you know, letting stuff go that we would normally enforce on somebody else. So I think, I think, I think with Bob's, Bob's biggest issue is with what we're redrafting, again, and then, and then sending out for bid, that that is, that is too high of a cost. And I've talked to Mr. Bacon about it and he's of the opinion these are the amount of hours he needs to put into it to redo those drawings properly and then submit.
What what position are we in to compete that with another contractor?
I don't have the CAD drawings. I don't have the digitals. So I don't know, I've got one set of drawings that was originally went out for bid and you'd have to give those to somebody and then they'd have to pull the information off of that. And I don't think that's going to be very cheap.
You know, Happy, we, we built the building right outside of City Hall ourselves with our own people. I take it with our own inspections. We remodeled the maintenance down there after the fire with no outside help. I just, I just disagree with spending $8,900 when we've already spent $13,000. Plus, we're still not tying any budget amount to his contract. I'm very concerned about that, that we're going to end up with another situation and another two year delay, just like we have with this situation because we don't have a number. That's my opinion.
So we've got a bid amount, but what you're saying is it's not contractually obligated that that bid come in, at or below what it does in that inspection.
We can tell the architect he has to bring our project in within so much percent of what we're budgeting for that amount, or he doesn't have a job revising the plan for whatever his cost is. You know, we are the end customer here, so I think we have a right to decide, you know, on his performance, just like we ask any contractor to perform, you know, on their contractual agreement.
So, so are we, are you looking to table this, Bob, or are you looking to sink it? Or what are we looking for here?
No, I'm not looking to delay this project any further. We've delayed it way too long.
Right.
I'm just saying we need to bring things into cost. We need to be conservative and we need to bring this thing into cost of what we're willing to spend and we need to have an agreement to be able to do that.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, then we don't want to vote on this until we have that wordsmithed out, right?
Well.
So this gets tabled until it gets worked out?
I think you're.
Is that what he's saying? Because if we vote on this, it's a go, right?
Yeah, we're into the second reading.
Yeah, this is the second reading, so I'm asking, do we table this until we tweak it? Or do we vote on it to see if it sinks or swims?
I find merit in what you're saying, Gary, that we table it.
Then I'm going to make a motion to table this until we get more specifications.
Well, what exactly does that entail?
Yeah, what specifications?
What do we need to do before we can vote on this?
What Bob and Happy were talking about.
Well, I think, so we have the specifications. Do we, do we vote down and then come back with another contract?
Yeah, so this is an ordinance to enter into this particular agreement. So if you're not going to, if the consensus is you're not going to do this agreement, your browser is going to vote down rather than table this because you're tabling this particular thing.
Thank you, sir.
So I think you ought to either.
Okay.
So if we don't get a motion on it, it dies anyway.
Right. So I'll retract my table comment then, please.
So Happy, could you just clarify for me what, if if we do not pass this tonight, what what does either the committee or you or whomever, what do we need to do to to keep this project moving?
So my opinion is I'm going to have to renegotiate with Bacon as to what his cost is. Is there a number that that you're comfortable with or you're uncomfortable with and tying it into whatever the budget's $100,000? We've established that. But is there a number that the board is comfortable with for redrafting the plans? I mean, we have, we do have a physical need to redo the drawings that we put up for bid properly from, from reputable companies and get those bids back in.
Right. My feelings, one, I want a timetable, you know, that he's operating on a timetable that he has to have this done in so many days or so many weeks. You know, and two, that he does it within a dollar amount that meets our budget. You know, off the cuff, half, to me, is still almost too much. But just to get this project going, I would go along with half. But I, I still don't think we need, you know, all of the other outside engineers to tell us, you know, I know what we did. It worked out perfectly fine. The systems are fine. I just, you know, like I said, this is, this is a small project, but it's important and it needs to be done with no more delays.
There has to be, there has to be transparency and accountability in this project too. You know, we can't, I mean, we have capable people, but you still have that question mark. Well, are they, and, you know, it's good for us, but it's not good for a homeowner. I think we owe it to the taxpayer to have some, to have accountability and transparency in. in this, and not just take care of this ourselves. I know it might be cheaper, but it might not be the best way to go, so.
Yeah.
I see your point.
It's a small town, not the big city.
Well, I understand that, but you're still, no matter where you're at, you, you do things the right way, so there's not a question, there's not a hint of anything, any wrongdoing. Because that's how I do business, so.
I, I agree 100%. I don't think we need to put our city staff in any kind of a position.
So we will be not, you know. I don't, you know, and what happened over here, building, it might have been good for that time, I don't know, this is a, plus, you know, I just, that's my two cents. Gary, you have something to add?
A couple of things. Number one, there was sealed drawings on the garage.
So I take.
I did the initial plans, and they were reviewed by an architect engineer, and they were sealed. We did, the city staff did this due to inspection. But number two on this, do we own the preliminary plans for this project?
We have a set of them, but I don't have digitals of it. I don't know if we own them yet or not, because we haven't, I haven't signed off on it, and we're still under, under the process of getting them done.
Okay. Because if we own them, is it an option to do a design build that that includes the architectural and engineering fees? That's a firehouse to build.
Yeah, then, yeah. But I don't know if, if, if we're at a point of, you've already got most of the design, then what kind of cost are you going to have coming in for what we budgeted for that? Is there going to be an extra for that design?
Right.
I see where you're going with it, I just don't know if it's possible.
Got you.
That's all, this project's been delayed and kicked down the road long enough, I'm, I'm ready to move and get moving here. We've talked about it, we've made promises, and here we are, we're going to, now we're going to wait and wait. And I get what you're saying, Bob, I respect that, you know, but it's up to you all, you know.
Now, the timetable is if this is approved, it will go to budget by the beginning of the year, or go to bid by the beginning of the year, right?
Well, we delay it, and even longer, we may not be able to start until the beginning of next year, because we're going to be, we're not going to meet again until December. So I'll work with the architect, see what kind of numbers we can come up with and the kind of agreement, and then we'll bring it back in December.
Well, if, if we delay it, I would ask that we meet before December. We meet as soon as, as practical after that, so we don't incur that delay. I don't know how you guys feel about that around the table, but, and we've got work to do, we should come in and do work if we need to do that to not delay that.
I think we set a tentative date.
Sorry, you also have a holiday in between, so you've got time off, that's going to interfere as well.
We set, we had sent it, set a tentative date of Monday, the 23rd, for an if-needed meeting.
Right.
I still have that on my calendar, so I would be fine with us meeting that day to get this moving.
Bob, what, what do you think needs to happen? Do you need to review, would you feel better about us reviewing some RFQ that goes out back to Bacon to see if they can sharpen the pencil on this, or?
That's what I do. I mean, I'm not aware of, I was aware of the original project, but I'm not aware of the revised project, you know, to see what totally needs to be done, but, you know, we're talking about adding a bathroom, moving a wall or so, I.
No, it's more complicated than that. We've got three bathrooms, we're shifting the bathrooms, adding a hallway, reconfiguring the squash room, creating a kind of a foyer for the boardroom, so there, it's more than just, you know, just a couple of items. Adding some things and moving things around.
You know, as long as we can talk to Bacon and have something for the board to vote on December 10th, that would be my idea.
When, when you say talk to Bacon, what do you, what do you mean?
It's going to put us all back to December, if we're going to come back together, right?
I just simply explain, you know, that this is too much. Does he really feel we need to require three outside engineers, you know, to work on this project for, I don't remember, what did you say that total was, Happy?
Somewhere between $2,000 and $4,000.
Right.
For mechanical, electrical, plumbing. For him, it's $3,600, a little over $3,600.
Right. And to ask him if he can do any better with his price, I mean.
So the long and short of it is, we're, we're not happy with $8,900 is the whole, the whole price for this, this piece of work. We'd like to see it be less than that.
I don't know how you all feel, I'm not.
I find merit in what you're saying.
And I'll base this on what I've done in the past.
So what, what happens, Mike, what happens if Bacon comes in and says, no, I'm going to stick to these figures? So where are we at then?
Then I think we come back to the table.
And we vote December 10th, your name.
I mean, if we read this, this'll, I, I think this'll pass if we read it, but is it what we need to do? I think Bob's bringing up a good point. You know, I came prepared tonight to vote yes, but after hearing Bob, to go back and ask Bacon to sharpen the pencil, I don't think is unreasonable.
Well, and then we could confirm the potential of design build, or what Gary was mentioning, right? You said you didn't think it was possible, but you weren't for sure.
Oh, look, we did adopt that with our purchasing policy, but usually the design, design build starts at the beginning, not when you're, you're this far into the plan.
A design bill on a remodel project like this is out of the question. You know, the design bill that Gary talked about at the firehouse was a somewhat of a fiasco.
Well, I came ready to vote yes on this tonight, to be honest with you, but I'm kind of deferring to you, because I kind of look to you as being like the guru of all things contracting, it's your business. I don't know what the rest of you all think, because I want this to get done, just like you all do.
Yeah, it's, that's.
So, Mark, if we, if we don't make a motion to approve this and it dies, does it have to go back for a first reading again, or does it only die as a second one?
You're going to have to go back.
Yeah, I, I think you should, the best thing to do if you're ever going to bring it back is, is to start over and do two readings on that one meeting, if you wanted to do that.
Got you.
Right. So if you have the second reading, you know, I would suggest the cleanest thing is either somebody moved to approve, or if anybody's willing to do that, then you can see where it goes from there again.
So we have no motion to approve?
What about Susan's idea about having a meeting on the 23rd?
Yeah, I would rather not wait a full month to revisit this. I think if we need to meet for 20 minutes just to discuss this, then we should do that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Can't we do two readings on the 10th?
I don't think we should wait until the 10th. I think we can, if we're going to do two readings, we can do that on the 23rd.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you meant in December, I'm sorry.
No, I think we need to take care of this in a week and a half. I don't think we should put it off an entire month.
I'm keen for that, that makes sense. Monday, the 23rd?
Yeah, I'm keen for that, too.
Okay.
Can you get a hold of him tomorrow?
It's all right, sure. Unless he's out deer hunting, I'm probably in shape to do a few. So is, we'll have a special meeting on the 23rd of November?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
If we don't have a motion, this just dies at the table, so. Hey, it takes us to new business.
New business.
All right, this is for open burning, the ordinance calls for, if you want to schedule that in November, this is when we do it. So it's the first regular meeting, establish a time period for burning on residential property without requiring a temporary permit, as required in subsections C and B above, which I didn't include those, that's just a regulation. Do you want to establish some dates?
Yeah.
Okay. Probably those dates like, what you want those to be?
Now to the end of the year.
Okay.
So you need to make a motion.
Motion to make it from now to the end of the year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It says to bill number 4394, an ordinance approving change order number two to the contract with CE Contracting Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri, on a water main improvement project number 20-8099, the amount of $52,407.30.
Second?
All in favor?
Could we, sorry, is there discussion?
Aye.
So let's, we're going to have a, we're going to have a second reading so we can have discussion, so.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Wait a minute, we have a, we have a first and a second on the, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All right. The second reading of bill number 4394, an ordinance approving change order number two to the contract with CE Contracting Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri, on a water main improvements project number 208099, the amount of $52,407.30.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We'll have a roll call, please. Wait, we're going to have, we're going to have some discussion.
No, I just wanted some clarification.
Okay.
And now I've lost my train of thought, goodness, sorry.
Well, I'm sorry about that.
No, this is just, this is, I'm sorry, I looked at this two days ago. I'm good, I answered my own question, I apologize.
So we do have a first and a second on the second reading, and we'll have a roll call, roll, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Eichmann?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbruster? Eight yes, zero no's, bill number 4394 now becomes ordinance 4315.
Thank you. To any other business?
I'd just like to revisit, just real quickly, the possibility, and I'm still learning how this all works, I know we're the legislative body, but we can still put things on a ballot for the opinion of the constituents, right? To get their ideas and stuff? Because I still think it's imperative that we reach out to our constituents before we decide on increase in 2% for water and sewer. So is this something that we could add to that?
It's my opinion, and we, this has come up before, I thought of this city a few years ago, there's no statutory authority for a non-binding resolution or, or even to adopt an ordinance by public vote.
Okay.
So I don't know that there's any authority for you to do that in this city.
Thank you, sir. So when we have this open forum, right, are we going to have Zoom as well?
Yeah.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that we get it out there for those who might be afraid, because the last thing I want to do is push something through and hear about it two weeks, three weeks, four months later.
I mean, if you want to have it at a different location, I mean, we can have it in a larger venue, because it'll be here, it's a regular meeting is when we'll have the public hearing.
Okay. I'm just, I, this is just something I just, I want to make sure.
That the public has a chance to see.
That our public knows about, and doesn't get sidetracked or slide slammed, and did I get slammed?
Well, you decided this, you either decided every year, or before you decided it for five years.
Right, yes, I understand.
So the public gets to see it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll keep it out there.
I'm just a little concerned about this certain situation we're in with COVID and the current climate right now, and the hardships that are out there. I mean, that's my concern. Okay, thank you for your time.
I probably should have brought this up during the COVID discussion, but I just wanted to see if anyone would be interested in having a discussion again about moving our, our meetings to virtual and making that available for all the other committees and commissions that meet. As we were told earlier, it's not just the mask wearing, it's also the social distancing, et cetera. I don't know about you guys, but we're not mostly six feet apart, and that concerns me a little, so I'd like us to consider going back to the virtual meetings and making that an option.
Do, do we feel like individually we can't do what Bob's doing and what I've done in the past, though, is my only question about that? I, I feel like I can without giving you guys any substantial reason, I can just say, hey, I'm not coming tonight. Is that acceptable to you guys, or?
That's how I look at it. So I think we already have the forum set up, that if you want to be virtual, be virtual, if you want to come, come.
Right, but I'm just recommending, I'm suggesting we follow the CDC recommendations and try and make it a little, that we, that we follow the recommendation. And if we don't, if we aren't meeting in this room, then we don't have to have staff cleaning the room, and if we, you know, my other recommendation when, or suggestion when Happy and I talked was going somewhere bigger, well, that's still staff needs to clean, and then we can be spaced, but then we've got to deal with, you know, TV cameras and whatever else. But I, and no, I, I feel like if we're meeting in person, I feel like I need to be here if I can be, if I'm sick, of course, I'm going to stay home. But I feel like the couple of meetings that we had where everyone was on Zoom, they went, well, I, I personally didn't have issues, well, I have one issue, but I missed a vote, not a huge deal, but I just would like for us to consider that again, since that is a CDC recommendation and all of our numbers are going up, we had over 100 active cases earlier in this week, this week, and I just feel like that is something we should discuss.
Could, could we solicit the opinion of those who have joined us tonight, possibly, to see if anybody has an opinion one way or the other? Anybody?
I think it's important for the public to have at least the option of Zoom. I was a little apprehensive about coming, I just wanted to check it out, see how things were conducted in this time. And you guys are, anyway, but my point is, is that I would, I would not be against Zoom, although there is a percentage of the population that, that have the technological access, therefore they may feel denied, so, I don't know, it could go either way. I mean, if you have a bigger space, again, you have more, at least you have the opportunity for, for the public still to have access to it, but you still have greater risk of staffing and all that, so I really don't know.
So I contacted Brad Arnold out at the sports complex, and they could let us use the double meeting rooms, they have them open, I don't know what cost, but, I mean, if I use this facility, it usually costs them. But it would give us, you know, twice the amount of room that we have here, we get to at least spread out the board and then set chairs up properly. That will not be conducive for SGTV, because they don't have the cameras out there, so you're losing that contact with your constituents. But that's a possibility to get people spread out, but still meet, still meet in person.
Is there undue hardship on you and staff if, if we all went to virtual, or?
There's no hardship, I mean, we've got it set up now, we've, we've paid for it. I don't think the conversation is as conducive on video as it is in person. You lose that rhythm, and it's hard to, to catch that, and, you know, because of the delay, because you're not face-to-face, you're not able to look people in the eye, it just, you don't get as good a feedback, I feel, from, from my point of view, as you do when you're in person. But we're also looking at people's health and safety, that's paramount.
Happy, I've got a comment I want to add with that stuff, is one, I, I do agree with Ms. Johnson, especially with the upcoming meeting in December, you know, with everybody possibly being together over Thanksgiving, and then two, with the Christmas holiday, I sure wouldn't want to know that anybody missed out on the Christmas holiday because of something that took place maybe at a city meeting and stuff, so, you know, we, since I've been on the board, we've had meetings at two other places over the years, one was at the firehouse, and one was at the KC Hall that I remember, and, and somebody set up cameras, and it seemed to go fine and stuff, but I too, I'm not there tonight, not because Mike thinks I'm deer hunting or anything, because I'm not, I've got a cough, and I'm not even going deer hunting Saturday, but I'll scare everything away, but, but I do think, as representatives, we might want to take a look, maybe month by month, meeting by meeting, and see what's the best thing to do and the best representation of us and the city. But I, I probably won't come. I like the meetings in person, I like, I think there's more interaction and stuff, but I will not be at the December 10th meeting in person, if it is in person and stuff, just because of the holidays.
And I anticipate Zooming in on both the November 23rd and December 10th meeting to, because I do want to gather.
to, because I do want to gather with my family and stuff, so we're going to take the opportunity to do that, so.
So the present, the current forum works for you, as long as you can zoom in?
Yeah.
Because I like meeting in person, to be honest with you, I want to, I want to be here. I want to be with the people if they want to show up, and if you don't want to show up, then don't show up.
Right.
Zoom.
That's the way I think we do it.
Yeah, I think, I like the current forum. That way you have an option, if you don't want to come in, don't come in. Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Well, if there's no other discussion, anything to talk about, I'll call this meeting a done.
Very good.
You want to take a few minutes, probably? All the work session ordered?
Yeah.
Approval of the agenda? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
So the issue to start off with is we went through the, the change in the contract for those who maintain public buyout properties. We're getting a lot of pushback from insurance companies, not, not the homeowners, but it's the insurance companies that are not willing to add it to their homeowner policy of those that are, that do the, the maintenance, so that it isn't costing the, the residents anything, so they don't want to pay anything extra, but from what the, we've got, got word from Farmers Insurance and State Farm, I think it was, that they won't cover anything that, that the homeowner doesn't own, since the homeowner doesn't.